Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I will declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the Wanneroo people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjang people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock local government area. I'd like to invite Pastor Amanda Francis forward from New Vine Church at Brankston to lead us in prayer tonight. But as Pastor Francis comes forward, I want to take a moment to think about the ten people who tragically lost their lives in the bus crash on Sunday the 11th of June. I and other councillors will have the opportunity to speak on this matter later during the meeting, but can we now all stand for a minute's silence to acknowledge those who have passed in this tragic event? Thank you. We'll remain standing for the prayer with the councillor.
Lord, your word says that you are the God of the broken-hearted and we have many people in our community today that are feeling broken-hearted, many family and friends, Lord, who are just feeling desperate. We just ask that, in their hopelessness, Lord, in their sense of agony, Lord, that you might come alongside them and that you might help them, that our community might come alongside them, that we would continue, Lord, to help them, to reach out to them, Lord, to bring them comfort, Lord, in small ways. All we think of the Lord Mayor and the councillors, Lord, the general manager and the staff who have also walked closely with these people, Lord, have shed many tears with them. Just ask, Lord, that you would continue to give them strength, give them wisdom, Lord, as they continue over the months and years to come, Lord, helping these people, Lord. Lord, we just pray for our community at this time. We thank you, Lord, that we've been able to bond together, Lord, and support one another and we pray that we might continue to do that, Lord, long into the months and years ahead. The Lord is my shepherd. I lack nothing. He makes me lie down in green pastures. He leads me beside still waters. He refreshes my soul. He guides me along the right path for his name's sake. Even though I walk through the darkest valley, I will fear no evil, for you are with me, your rod and your staff, they comfort me. You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies. You anoint my head with oil, my cup overflows. Surely goodness and love will follow me all the days of my life and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor Francis. We've received, so there's a leave of absence being granted for councillor Painter and received apologies from councillors Burke and Watten. If someone moving those apologies be accepted, councillor Sanders, seconded councillor Hill. All those in favour, it's unanimous. Confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Moores. All those in favour, it's unanimous. Disclosures of interests, any disclosures of interest, councillor Grine.
Yeah, thank you, Miss Savile. I'd like to have a conflict of interest on MM3 2023 in regards to the food waste reduction grants. I have a non-perpetual interest, significant conflict as I'm related to one of the charity organisers. Thank you.
Councillor Olsen.
Yeah, in the corporate and community sections, CC 32 slash 2023, the tender for road resurfacing, non-perpetual interest, significant conflict for the reason that my grandson works for one of these companies that submitted a successful tender, I will leave the chamber and take that part in discussion and voting.
Thank you. There are no petitions. Public address. So on report number PE 22 2023, calling Judith Knott speaking against the recommendation. Thank you. Miss Knott, you'll have three minutes.
So I'm speaking on behalf of about forty residents of Watercon Creek Road who are opposed to this application. The main objection we have is regarding the impact on the environment and ecology. So the area of Watercon Creek Road has a lot of eucalypt forest with heavy story undergrowth. We have seen evidence and we more frequently hear evidence of koalas in the area. No ecological investigations have been undertaken as is required under state planning policy. We find that the application's assessment that they will not be clearing trees is disingenuous because there isn't sufficient area for sixty campsites without tree clearance. Furthermore, there's a lot of infrastructure works that are required which haven't been documented, which will again impact trees. So that's our main issue. We're also concerned that the application doesn't demonstrate adequate arrangements for supply of water and disposal of wastewater. A lot more infrastructure will be required. One of the reports suggests that water will be supplied by a town main, which suggests a lack of familiarity with the area, and calculates a requirement of eight, over eight thousand litres of water a day. So it's certainly going to require water to be trucked in, which means a lot more infrastructure will be required for the tanks and the roads for that to happen. In terms of wastewater disposal, it's a wastewater treatment system with a surface-run irrigation. That is going to be dispersed in an area of affluent management, which is just above Watercon Creek itself. The distance, the buffer distance between the watercourse and the affluent management area is insufficient. It's less than the minimum requirement under planning. That is unacceptable. We're very concerned about the bushfire and flooding risks to people unfamiliar with bushfire behaviour, the risks of bushfires starting from campfires. It's proposed to be an unmanaged site, so no onsite management. So the behaviour of people in the campsite will be very much at risk. Can I continue? It's a flood, an known flood risk area. Last year, you'll recall, we had three major floods. We were cut off for ten days for one of those floods. The report talks about self-evacuation, self-managed evacuation. That is just not an option. It's a great life safety risk in this context. When Watercon Creek floods, there's no access to the main Great North Road. I don't know whether that's been appreciated. Finally, the impact of the traffic report and the acoustic report, we have found that the facts in those reports are actually inaccurate. It talks about the current Watercon Creek Road, which is a rural road, having five hundred car movements an hour currently, which will only be increased by another sixteen. I cycle Watercon Creek Road frequently. You're lucky to see two cars an hour. The acoustic report doesn't account for, it accounts for fifty per cent of people, which could be up to seven hundred and twenty people.
Just pause there. So there's an extension of time being moved from councillor Hawkins to councillor Sanders. All those in favour, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Grine, Sanders, Hill, Hawkins, Judd and Savile, those against, councillor Olsen will declare it carried. You have one further minute.
Thank you. So the acoustic report references people talking, fifty per cent of people talking at loud volume, and that's what they have based their acoustic assessment on. It takes no account of generators, traffic, motors running, music, the effect of alcohol and partying. None of those things, and those are going to impact not just immediately adjoining neighbours, but the ecology, the fauna and flora, well particularly the animals around. Also, there's the need for additional lighting, which hasn't been addressed in the report. The ablutions block is remote from the campsites, the proposed campsites, and the council report itself recognises that lighting is going to need to be provided to provide safe access to that road. That's going to have a knock-on effect on the local wildlife as well as on immediate neighbours. So no onsite management seems to be a very dangerous prospect for a site of this size. I guess I'd just like to say we support council's rejection of the application. Thank you for listening.
Is there any questions of Miss Knott? Councillor Olsen.
Just one question. You do know this is up for refusal?
Yes.
Oh, you're sorry. Yeah, we do. We do support council's rejection.
Yeah, you're just, you're speaking in support of council's recommendation.
I think there's just a, they're listed wrongly on the screen.
Yeah, yeah.
The speakers.
Thank you.
Councillor Dunn.
Yeah, thank you, Judith, for taking the time to come in tonight. I guess my one question is around the process that's led us to this here tonight, and I just wanted to get a bit of a feeling from you with regard to the opportunity you've had to actually express your position with this DA and whether you believe you had more than enough employ opportunity, given the fact that we are at the point now where it's come to council now and we've had all the submissions. Are you happy with the amount of opportunity that you've had to actually put a submission in for this DA?
No. So most of Watercon Creek Road didn't, weren't notified about the application. Mostly, we saw it on Facebook the day before the closing of submissions. So most of us wrote very quick objections where we felt, but we didn't have a lot of time to reflect on the reports. I spent most of the Sunday before just reading every single report so that I knew exactly what I was up against and understanding the application that was being put forward. But yeah, I think more of Watercon Creek Road, because of the impacts of traffic noise, the valley itself is like a little, every, it's like an echo chamber because of the nature of the valley. So every bit of noise is going to reflect way along those, the road. And I think we should have had more notice. More properties should have been notified, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And councillor Judd.
Thank you, ma'am. It's nice to see you again in person. I just want to say thank you for getting up and speaking on behalf of those residents that were at our little meeting out at Laguna. I think it was about thirty-five, if I was right, that come. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the main thing that everyone was mostly concerned about was the fact that it was such a big development without it being manned and the issue of the water. That was the biggest concerns, wasn't it?
That and the impact on the environment, yeah. Those two things, yeah.
Yeah, it was a major issue about the safety, wasn't it?
Very, very concerned about life safety as well.
Yeah.
And the impact on people who may not be familiar with flood and fire in those, you know, flood can happen very quickly and it's a known flood zone. Fire, as we know, you know, it could be a risk of fire. If people are camping, they may expect to have campfires and it could be extremely risky.
Yes, it can be. Thank you so much for coming and speaking.
Thanks.
Please thank Miss Knott for her presentation. Now invite Kong Yee forward, who's speaking against the council recommendation. Forward, Miss Yee. So you have three, three minutes.
Okay. Hi, good evening. I'm the camping ground designer. I'm aware of the public objection and would like to address it by explaining three key points. The camping ground is not prohibited by the LEP Local Environmental Plan. I contacted the council before starting the job and the council planning officer confirmed that the camping ground is allowed. That's why we submitted the development application. I had a last meeting, I had with the council, the council planner told me the main reason of the refusal is the flood, the flood risk. And many people go camping because they want to close to the water and the water means possibility of a flood. Therefore, flood risk is very common in camping ground. So, so, so this. So this news article shows a camping ground in Waukau is set to reopen after being damaged by a flood last year. This kind of incidence always happen. So I don't think flood is an issue for the camping ground. The design guide for camping ground is regulated by the local government Camping Ground Regulation 2005. So this one, this is the camping ground design guide. And it is important to note, this regulation doesn't have any requirements for flood safety. As a result, flood risk may not be considered a significant issue for camping ground based on this regulation. The main work of the camping ground involved landscaping the grassland and constructing a toilet. All kind of designs have been carried out by professionals and including architecture, acoustic flood risk management, wastewater, bushfire, tropical stormwater, structural designs. We are aware of the concern raised by the public objections and they will be addressed by over teams of professionals. Finally, since the main work involves the grassland, we are confident that the camping site will minimise its environmental impact. Additionally, we believe that the camping site will bring several benefits to the local community. For instance, it will create job opportunities for maintenance personnel and bring customers to the local business. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr Yee? Councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The report you're looking at there, that you're just showing, is thirty years old.
Sorry, which report?
The report you put up, next one, next one forward. It's by Kerry Hickey. It's in 2019 ninety-three.
Yes, this is a design guide.
Yeah, that's correct. But the flooding now compared, that way, Wallonby, Laguna, is huge to what it was in them thirty years ago. It's a lot more. And also is, the floods are very big there where it's blocking off. Where you're saying the other camping ground is opening, it wasn't and doesn't exactly have the amount of water that went to Wallonby and through Laguna.
And I'm aware of the flood risk and I'm also aware there's so many camping grounds got flood risk. And I believe the people, they can move away. This is not house. House can stay, but if flood coming, the people just go.
But you, my concern to you is there's only one way in there and one way out. If there's an emergency, you have to go through there and there's people in there, there's going to be death.
Yep.
The farthest, I'm concerned.
Is that a?
Thank you.
Question? Yeah, yeah. So.
Thank you.
No, no further questions. Thank Mr Yee for his presentation.
Thank you.
We'll now move to deal with report PE 22 2023. Moving the recommendation, councillor Dunn, seconded councillor Hawkins. Speaking councillor Dunn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank all of the residents and also Judith for coming in and speaking. I'd like to thank all of the residents for bringing the submissions to us. I'm supporting this motion tonight because it all comes down to specifically amenity and rural land use and I do have concerns of that flood risk. And over the last three or four years in particular, the amount of times we've seen Wallonby Tavern go under, to even think that we could possibly put a camping ground there and allow residents and tourists alike to have to put their own lives in danger to save someone, it's just incomprehensible. With regard to the intensive development, it seems as though, you know, you never have every campsite completely filled out to the maximum capacity, but in saying that, it has to be allowed for. And if we do allow for it, it's an absolute overdevelopment of the site. So I couldn't possibly support that either. I did ask the question to our speaker tonight with regard to the way the community were notified around this and the staff themselves are doing their job as far as the policy goes and we recognise that. But this further highlights the concern on occasion when we have big community-based DAs like this, that we don't have a broad enough reach when it comes to, when it comes to consulting the community. So that is a bit of a red flag. But in saying that, we've been out to consultation and every community member has had an opportunity to put a submission in and simply by the amount of submissions that we've got, it's evident that overall the, I mean, I've been here for six and a half years and I've never seen a single DA come to council that's had this much, in my ward in particular, to go against it. So given that and what the community expectations along with flood and wastewater management, I just, there's no way I can support this.
Okay. No further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Now moving on to consideration and adoption of all reports by Inglobo, councillor Dunn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. That having read and considered the reports in the agenda relating to items GMU4 2023, minutes of the Audit Risk Committee meeting held on the ninth of May, PE 23 2023 Development Application Performance Monitoring, CC 31 2023 Tender T 022324 HUN, CC 33 2023 Tender T 2023 hyphen O3, CC 37 2023, the minutes of the Strategic Property and Community Facilities Committee, CC 38 Investment Report, May 2023, CC 39 Resolutions Tracking Report, WI 19 2023 Community Sponsorship and Fee Waving Policy Review, WI 20 2023 Minutes of the Local Traffic Committee Meeting Held on the fifteenth of May this year, and WI 21 2023 Minutes of the Local Traffic Committee Extraordinary Meeting Held on the second of June. The council adopt the recommendations as printed for those items.
They're seconded councillor Hill. Put those, all those in favour, it's unanimous. We'll now move to report MM2 2023. On Sunday night, the 11th of June, shortly before midnight, a bus carrying thirty-five people overturned while approaching a roundabout on One Country Drive, Greta, near the Hunter Expressway exit. Ten of the bus passengers tragically passed away with many more hospitalised, including two in intensive care. The passengers were travelling back to their homes and accommodation having just celebrated a wedding at the Wandon Estate Winery in Lovedale. This was not the way this joyous occasion was meant to end. Following this unimaginable tragedy that occurred within our LGA over the long weekend, I want to express my sincere condolences to the families and friends of those that sadly lost their lives as a result of this incident. I want to recognise the bus passengers who survived the crash and for their bravery in providing crucial first aid and support in what must have been horrific circumstances. I hope you're able to access the care that you now need during your recovery. I also wish to express my deepest appreciation on behalf of council to all the first responders who were involved, including New South Wales Police, Ambulance New South Wales, Fire and Rescue New South Wales, New South Wales RFS, New South Wales SES, Cessnock Rescue Squad, Transport for New South Wales and our own Cessnock City Council team members who managed the site, and the New South Wales Health workers across many hospitals who cared for and are still caring for the injured. On Tuesday, the 13th of June, council in conjunction with New South Wales Health opened a community crisis centre at the Brankston Community Hall. I would like to thank the volunteers from Red Cross, Salvation Army, local chaplaincy services, as well as New South Wales Health and Disaster Recovery Agency staff who provided care and assistance to local residents in need of support at the two community crisis centres established both here in Brankston and in Singleton, as well as at the site of the incident. The community also came together on the evening of Thursday, the 15th of June, for a gathering near the crash site to honour those who lost their lives in the crash, as well as supporting their loved ones and paying tribute to the first responders. To see the overwhelming support and generosity offered to those impacted by this tragedy is a testament to our community and residents. I'm advised that as at four PM today, the Rotary Australia Fund set up to support the victims of this tragedy has now received over seven hundred and eight thousand dollars in donations. I'd like to thank everyone for their support. So I've moved that way. Is anyone else speak? Councillor Moores.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Mr Mayor, I'm very proud of Cessnock council workers who are not really trained in this sort of thing like mine's rescue or train week in, week out for disasters. I think that they automatically was asked to do something and did it very, very well. I congratulate all of them. Thank you.
Now put the mayoral minute, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Move to MM3 2023. Wait for councillor. Okay. I'll move the mayoral minute as provided on screen. Is there any? Debate on this one? No, I don't need this. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Miss Savile. I'd just like to voice my support for this mayoral minute. As an example, one of the food recycling and charitable organisations that may be able to benefit from this sponsorship is the Hunter Food Relief Organisation. And just to give some scope of the utilisation of this service in our community, the Hunter Food Relief is an organisation that offers and prepares and provides meals for individuals who are unable to afford or have access to food and meal preparation services in the Cessnock area. They're open two days a week and often the individuals who attend this organisation are referred by other organisations who are managing the assistance of these individuals. Just recently, the Hunter Food Relief Organisation has serviced and assisted a hundred, approximately a hundred and seventy-eight individuals in a one-week period across those two days that they're open. And the statistics that they're seeing for the number of people in our local community who are in need of this assistance has increased close to sixty per cent in the last twelve months. So we can really see clearly the way that the increase in the cost of living is having an impact on people right here in our local community. So I think that this is a fantastic opportunity for council to do what we can to assist.
Councillor Judd.
Thank you, ma'am. Through you, Mr Mayor, as I know you weren't sure exactly how much it was, would any of the council staff have a rough idea?
We have to take that on notice, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but I think it's a significantly large amount, but.
I'm just curious.
Something that we want to make sure we get the maximum benefit of in our local community. Something that we want to make sure we get the maximum benefit of in our local community, rather than handing it back to the state government.
I know, it'd be good.
Take it on notice and get that information out. No further debate. I thank the councillors for their hopeful support on this matter and put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Okay, we'll now move to motions of urgency. Are there any motions of urgency? No. Next item is report CC thirty-two twenty-two-three. Okay, have someone moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Hawkins. Is there any debate? No debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Next item is report CC thirty-four twenty-two-three. Moving that way, councillor Hill, is it seconded? Councillor Dunn, speaking that way.
Thank you, Mesavell. I'd like if I could move an amendment to the existing resolution on screen. I believe there's been an amendment provided just below, just to include an additional section in dot point one to have the removal of the four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar election expenses line item removed.
Thank you, and that's accepted by seconded councillor Dunn, yep. So that now is the motion. Speaking, this councillor Olsen.
Yeah, yeah, just on that, where's that change our deficit? That bring it back to about six million dollar deficit, does it?
To the Chief Financial Officer.
Ah, yes, it makes the operating deficit pretty much being on the six million dollars. Yep. Six million, yes.
Six mil, so six mil deficit. I think it's, I think it's, I'm a little bit shocked really because was last year we set a surplus budget, ended up being nearly one point seven million dollar deficit. Now we're setting a six and a half million dollar deficit budget. And I'm concerned that with, we know that the state government's got a seven, I think it's a seven billion dollar black hole. The federal government's got massive debt as well. I'm concerned that some of our grants will dry up and that puts more and more pressure on us and where our six and a half million dollar deficit is. The, what also amazes me is that this is a document that we're running off and a councillor finds an error just by reading the document. I'm just concerned that, is there any more errors in there? That I can find, I can pick up one very easy. And I'm not an accountant, I never professed to be an accountant. But I found an error that brought back, brought our budget down, changed our budget by half a million dollars. Now, that's a concern to me that what our staff are doing, are they, what's, how do they make that sort of mistake? That's a massive mistake, half a million dollar change around. And myself and councillor Judd found it. I don't know if any other councillors noticed the error, but that's up to the other councillors if they want to read that paperwork. But I, as a councillor, I'm concerned that we're setting a deficit budget. It's so high, it's so high that we are heading downhill rapidly and we're not actually servicing the area as well as we should be with our roads, et cetera, et cetera. And we're going to be looking at borrowing more money to do Wallonby Road and things like that. It's putting our debt service ratio again into a very close line of we're going to be very much in trouble if the state and federal government don't come through with all their grants, like they have over the last five or six years with Covid and et cetera. They were giving out a lot of extra money for councils and we were lucky to get extra money. And that's going to dry up now that they've got to try and meet their budgets as well. As we've seen on the news in the last couple of nights with the state government's budget, how bad they are and they support us with so much funding. So on the budget, I'm not happy and I haven't supported a budget in I don't know how many years and I won't be supporting this one because it's a deficit budget again. Some people might think it's funny that we're setting it, that I'm objecting to setting a deficit budget, but I don't think it's a laughing matter. I think it's a serious matter that we've got to be certainly addressing these issues with our residents and making sure we got good leadership. I want to move on to the next issue as I've spoken about the budget now, about the fees and charges. Now, this is one, one of the things that really annoys me is we're giving ourselves a pay increase without voting on it because we voted last year. So we're all getting about a thousand dollars extra a year now after this budget goes through. So that's an extra thousand dollars for each councillor without voting on it, but I'll let people know anyway. The problem I got is in the aquatic programs, we're pushing our learn to swim classes per person up by a dollar a year. If you're a disability person, you're going up two dollars a year. If you're going into the aqua-aerobic, it's going up thirty cents per person. Very small increases, you might think, but these are very important areas for our community. And we should be encouraging these people to come in to learn the swim classes, especially if they've got a disability. Also, we argued previously in the year about the swimming club annual fees. Now, we've put a hundred and sixty-five dollars on it. A few of us councillors wanted that to be removed. We're now pushing that to one seventy-one. That's an extra six dollars for a community group that pay a lot of money to use the pool anyway. I think those fees and charges should be reduced to stay at where they are for this year and keep, to encourage people to learn the swim, to encourage our swimming clubs to attend.
Has expired councillor Olsen. Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got a quick question with the dump passes. I had a resident ask me with the operational plan to say, was there still dump passes available? And I've read that it's four waste and eight resource recovery passes. So is that four domestic waste and then eight recyclable? Is that right or?
Four general waste and eight for recycling, yes.
Yeah, it was. I just wanted to double check so I don't give them the wrong information or other sort. I've got five minutes, I'll quickly ask. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Olsen, do you have a question?
I want to put up an amendment, Mayor Pinson, that Miss Savell, oh, sorry. Yeah. I want to, the learn to swim programs to stay at fifteen dollars for a general person. For a disability person, stay at thirty dollars. For aqua-aerobic stays at eight dollars. For the swimming club, annual fee stays at one sixty-five. And carnival fees stay at one thirty-seven and fun days stay at one fifty. No increases on those, on those six items in the fees and charges. Can I put the amendment up?
So did.
Do you allow?
Got the, well, I think we can move the item, the issue will be that there's no funding source available for those and so it would just be increasing the deficit budget, I would imagine. So I, I'm just trying to get advice around whether we're allowed to move that way without any of the funding.
Yeah, well, we've just saved half a million dollars.
Okay, so you're, yeah, we're okay for you to move the, that amendment.
Thank you. So I, I
Yeah.
I hope that the councillors here
I'll just call the director.
Thank you. Councillor Olsen, I assume that you're adopting the existing recommendation just with the amending the fees and charges as you read them out?
Yeah, yeah, from the athletics program and the booking fees.
Okay, athletics program and booking fees, on what page, sorry?
One hundred.
In the fees and charges document?
In the fees and charges section, yeah.
Okay, so tap in for you need a second.
So is that motion seconded councillor?
I just hope that councillors can see that the light here in, that we should be promoting our people to learn to swim as much as possible. And I know it's expensive as it is to, and everyone's cost of living is going up and up and up. It's, when I'm, I'm not asking for a lot here. We want all our kids to be able to learn to swim because you don't want to see any more tragedies in the Hunter.
Speaking councillor Sander.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I have a question. With those, the amendment and what councillor Olsen's saying about the prices, why are the prices going up? What evidence did the, did the contractors say that with, why are they going up? Obviously, everything else is going up. I was just wondering if they gave us explanation for that. Thank you.
Director of Corporate and Community Services.
Thank you, councillor Sander. We'd like to take that on notice. Something like that, we wouldn't have off the top of our head. So certainly, we don't know what that is and we'll certainly respond to you.
Okay, with no further debate, oh, sorry.
Sorry, do we have a total figure of what this is going to cost?
The director.
Because we've got percentage increases but not a total on that page.
Director.
Again, without pre-knowledge of what the changes are, we certainly can't go and model that and give you a dollar figure at this point in time. So the answer is I don't know what that will cost.
Well, if that's, if that's the case, I don't have an issue with them staying the same, but I can't vote for this right now. I'd prefer to see that come back as a separate motion, maybe next month to amend it. But not knowing exactly how much, given this has been out on exhibition, I'm not comfortable with moving a motion to change fees and charges and not knowing how much the fees and charges are. As I said, I'm more than happy that they happen, but I'm not prepared to move a, to support a motion that doesn't actually tell me how much it's going to cost me.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Didn't we workshop this document? Has it been out on public exhibition for consultation for how long now? When did it go out?
Director.
It went out in April following the council meeting and it was on public exhibition for twenty-eight days. There was a number of workshops prior to going on exhibition and briefing last week on the submissions receipt.
Yeah. So there's been ample opportunity to raise something like this, to put forward the merits for it, to have it considered, to have it costed, to have it put in into place. And here we are at the last minute, we're pulling out something uncosted. This is what I want. I just think that there's a process for these sorts of things. We're trying to display good governance and open and transparency. And here we come at the last minute. This is what I want to change with. It's a wonderful concept. I'd be happy to look at it and fees and charges and learn to swim. It's a wonderful thing, but to try and pull apart a budget like this, I can't see, I can't see this being done for anything other than sort of political grandstanding. The process, there's ample time to bring this forward so that we can consider it. I just think this has been done completely for the wrong reason. So yeah, I won't be supporting the amendment, not because I don't support learn to swim, not because I don't support keeping our fees and charges for community activities at the lowest possible to maintain services. I just think this is the wrong thing, the wrong reason, done the wrong way.
Okay, councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I think the last time I checked, one of the biggest causes of infant death in Australia was drowning. So to me, I have a young child, it's quite expensive to take a child every week to go to learn to swim. And I think it's highly important. We are completely surrounded by water. And I mean, our whole culture is going to the beach. But on the other thing is maybe we should just defer the whole motion because if it's wrong with the councillor fees and we're saving money there, if the issue with people not wanting to vote for it because they don't know how much it's going to cost us to actually keep these fees the same for the swimming, that maybe we should defer the whole thing so we know actually what we're going to pay for the councillor fees and actually what we'd pay if we didn't change the swimming fees. Yeah, I think that would be a great idea because I'm actually not comfortable to vote on the operational plan. If there's a massive, what was it, half a million dollar issue? That's huge. That's huge money. I don't make that in a year. Do you know what I mean? I don't make that in a year. And I'm pretty sure every resident out there would be quite annoyed to go, oh, it's just chump change. We made a tiny little mistake. It's a huge mistake. So to be honest, I don't think it's a big thing to be voting on this swimming thing because I think it stops the drowning in town. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just make the comment in regards to the reference about deferring the, the budgets required to be set before the end of the financial year, which is why it's considered this month. And just refer all councillors back to council's adopted code of meeting practice in three point four-two, which says councillors should reasonably inform themselves of any business to be considered at the meeting. And if clarification is required, this should be sought prior to the meeting. And as well as around nine point one-seven, which starts off councillor or council employee to whom a question is put to is entitled to be given reasonable notice of the question and in particular sufficient notice to be enabled reference to be made to other persons or to information. So I'd encourage councillors, all councillors, to make sure that if there are questions, concerns that they need additional advice of, to make that, make those inquiries prior to the meeting night. Now refer to councillor Moore's.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I think that we're just going around in circles here. The best thing to do is either make a decision on it or bring it back to another meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll now deal with the, with councillor Olsen's amendment. So all those in favour of the amendment is councillors Olsen and Judd. Those against, councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell. So the amendment is defeated. Speaking in right of reply to the motion is councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mesavell. Just here in closing, in regards to the original amendment and the, my original amendment and the adoption of the plan as a whole, I just wanted to quickly reference a couple of items that I think are great to see in this operational plan that I know that myself and the other councillors, especially in Ward D, have been pushing for over the past twelve months or so. We, the recreational buildings construction program has three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in grants for money for the amenities building in the Cliff Lee Meadows Park, which will see one of the first, one of the only amenities blocks between, between Gillison Heights and Curry Curry be built to service the people in that corridor, which I think is fantastic to see and was one of the major points of submission in the corridor plan. We also have the local play space in the recreational facilities construction program for Avery's Village Head and Greeter, fully funded by development contributions in that area. Another item that I, myself and councillor Grine have spent quite a bit of time chasing up in finding out where it's going to go, was it even happening, had it been sort of forgotten by the wayside? So it's fantastic to see that included. We additionally have one point four million dollars in the local road renewal program for Sawyer's Gully Road, which is probably every second or third question we get in Ward D and C now for one of the major roads that we need to see work done on. And it's great to see that in there. Adam Street, Head and Greeter Road rehabilitation, a road that was significantly damaged during the closure of the main road at the traffic lights. Richmond Vale Road, Richmond Vale has received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. uh, during the closure of the main road at the traffic lights. Richmond Vale Road, Richmond Vale has seen a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Commenting on the report, he's, he's right. All right.
I'm happy to wrap up.
Rule that councillor Hill is allowed to continue.
Fantastic. Thank you, Miss Savell.
Councillor Hill is allowed to continue.
Additional.
That I, I don't believe that the point of order is a, a valid point of order.
In addition, in the local road renewal program, we see an item that councillor Painter and I have pushed for quite extensively in the, um, sign for repairs to Deacon Street, Curry Curry. We also see road re- rehabilitation investigation for Black Hill Road in Black Hill at the far end of Ward D. Um, and additional, uh, road investigations for repair for Head and Street, Head and Greeter, uh, on the approach there to the new set of traffic lights. I think that, um, all these items we see in the operational plan for the next twelve months, um, are evident from the community consultation that councillors have been undertaking as well of staff, um, over the course of the last twelve months. And I think, um, while there is the, the fact that we are running a deficit, there's been a number of briefings and workshops that where we have discussed this with council staff, the majority of, um, a large amount of that deficit coming from the depreciation of assets, um, and our push to sort of get more operational and capital works over the line, which I think is a worthy cause in this, in this budget.
Thank you. With no further debate, uh, we'll put the item, all those in favor. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Savell. Uh, those against councillors Olson and Jurd, uh, are declared carried. Uh, moving now to report CC thirty-five, twenty twenty-three. Moving that way, uh, councillor Hill, seconded, uh, councillor Dunn. Uh, speaking on that, are you speaking to start considering, councillor Olson?
Yeah, I just, a question on making the rates. We use land values for, um, to, as part of our calculation to work out, uh, the cost of the, to rate payer. With the land values all coming back and some of them have gone up double, triple in values, how will that affect our, our council land rates in the near future?
Chief Financial Officer.
Uh, thank you councillor Olson. So, uh, council rates are still limited by the rate peg, so we'll still be going up by three point eight percent. Um, what happens with regard to land values is, um, those land values that have gone up higher than the average, uh, will see an increase higher than three point eight percent. Those that have a land value that has not gone up, um, or is below the average may see uh, a smaller increase or even a decrease in their total rates in general. So it kind of depends on where their final land value has been determined by the value in general.
Right. It's, it's interesting, it's interesting that we can only increase our rates by three point eight percent and that's three point eight percent overall. So everybody was concerned, concerned, concerned. But that's at the moment where we're controlled by rate pegging. There is a possibility that in the future that rate pegging will go. And then these land values have tripled or doubled or whatever, um, could be a big bearing on what the, the landowner pays in rates in the future. I have had a lot of people speak to me about it. And the way we're looking financially as a council and as every council in the state struggles for, for funding. And we see that the state government is, is broke and the federal government's going broke. There may be, one day they might remove rate pegging and then these, these land values that might make much now in five years' time could mean a lot to people. And I've really got some concerns about that. So let's hope that doesn't happen because otherwise we'll see a lot of people not being able to afford to pay their land rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, no further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favor. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Savell. Those against councillors Olson and Jurd. Uh, now move to report CC thirty-six, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, moving that way, councillor Grine, seconded councillor Hill. Uh, any debate? No debate, uh, yep, sorry, councillor Jurd.
Sorry there, Mayor, you were a bit fast for me to press the buzzer. Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. How does anyone invite a member of the public to a committee meeting?
Is that a question to?
Mm-hmm, I've got a couple of questions.
Um, John, General. General Manager.
Uh, the member, the committee itself would invite a general member of the public to the, to any meeting.
So anyone in that committee could invite a member of the community?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Through the, sorry, just clarify through the committee's charter.
Through the committee's charter. So would that mean that the whole committee would have to pick somebody? Is that right? Like, say, say for example, I said, I want to invite John, sorry, um, councillor Moores. Um, then it, the whole committee would then have to say, yes, we approve councillor Moores getting invited. Is that right?
It, it depends what's written on the charter of the committee. Um, each, each committee's charter could be slightly different. So it may be in, up to individuals, it could be up to the whole committee.
Okay, so how do I find that information?
Usually written in the charter, councillor Hill.
Yeah.
Councillor Jurd, um, when you say invite a person to the committee, do you mean just for, to attend a single meeting or to become a sitting member of the committee? Yeah.
Um.
On list. Um, with our meetings, we have deadlines. So is there a deadline on when the cutoff is to invite somebody?
As I think was just outlined, it would be.
It'd have to be planned well in advance, sort of thing, is that right?
Be in relation to whatever's in the committee charter.
Okay, all right. Um, how does councils committees usually run, meaning the code of conduct of members and guests?
Director.
Um, thank you, Miss Savell. Um, the code of conduct applies to all councillors and council officials and members of a committee. Invited guests, um, depending on the committee, may not necessarily be covered by the code of conduct.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Um, this, this is a question for, um, Mayor Savell, if I can. Um, were you aware of the Facebook post of the Bahuma Neighbourhood Centre petition to have councillor Olson and myself removed from council? That was posted on the second of May.
Aye.
I, why I ask is, um, you tried to ring myself and then you emailed me and you stated you wanted me to, that you wanted to raise some concerns from, um, me joining the Aboriginal community, um, council meeting or committee meeting, um, over something that I'd said in the, in April's meeting. Giving these concerns, I'm asking if you would, oh, you said, given these concerns, I'm asking if you consider resigning as a member of the committee in a show of good faith. You would still be entitled to attend as an observer. Should you wish to rebuild these relationships, to which I told you, I'd like to speak to anyone that took offence and explain what I was saying. I was not being racist. I was not doing anything other than saying we are one country and adding culture to a paperwork could cause racism as I was concerned about it. I'm an Aboriginal myself and I actually find that email offensive to, to remove me from a, a committee. What's the difference from me attending or being a committee member? Oh, jeez. How come you didn't chair the meeting?
The code of meeting, uh, the charter of the thing outlines that primarily it should be chaired by a community representative.
Okay, I wasn't sure of that one. Thank you very much. Um, why was the committee not pulled into line? Uh, thi- this, this was the worst committee meeting I've ever been to. And that's why I ask these questions. Because I've been getting nowhere with my emails after nearly getting physically assaulted from this committee meeting. I just, I could just find it absolutely horrible that this would happen. That yet no one actually is batting an eyelid. We, we got security after two hundred people, nearly two hundred people come for the sta- for the, um, smart city. I went out to the car park, I was speaking with councillor Grine and nearly got punched in the face by a committee member. Or actually, sorry, got invited to be at this committee. Now, nothing has been done to make sure that I feel safe in this environment. When I asked if you just let security know when she was here at the last committee meeting, or the last council meeting, you wouldn't even let security know just to say, hey, heads up, we've got to keep an eye on this lady. She nearly punched one of our councillors in the car park. Nothing has been done. Thank you.
Councillor Grine.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor Savell. Um, being part of this, uh, Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander committee meeting, um, and actually having conversations with these committee meeting, uh, many, uh, people who are lovely people and are, are, are very, um, dedicated to our community and the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people within our community. Um, I, I found it very, um, insulting, a- a- as you all know, that, uh, and I made a point of saying so when that statement was made in that April meeting, councillor Jurd. Um, and during conversations with the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people from our community, they didn't feel comfortable. Um, and that was their response to me personally. Um, and I don't know what other conversations I've had with other councillors or the mayor or other staff members. Um, in relation to that committee meeting where I think it was the first one that, um, yourself and councillor Olson attended. Um, I was actually disgusted in the behaviour that was, was happening from another councillor towards community members within that meeting. I was there and yes, it wasn't justified. And yes, when you did approach me in the car park, nearly being hit and, and not being hit are two different things. I don't believe for one second, and I was there, that you were actually in jeopardy of being hit. Um, I, I do not believe that at all. Otherwise, I would have been the first one to step in and protect you, councillor Jurd. Thank you, Miss Savell. That's all I have to say on that matter.
Okay, uh, that's, uh, councillor Grine has closed debate. She was the, the mover of that, that motion. So, um, there's no further.
Like other councillors.
Question.
Um, the chairperson of the, of the representative of the Aboriginal Committee is supposed to be appointed for one year. When was that person appointed?
The chairperson, uh, is appointed at, at each meeting as there's been no one to feel.
Read the charter, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm advising you that there has been no one, uh, wanting to take on the role of chairperson on a permanent basis. So it becomes elected as the chair is vacant.
That's not the charter says. The charter says it's one year.
And there, if there is no chairperson, then the co- the committee would be required to elect it at the meeting so that there is able to be a chairperson at the meeting. And as there is no one.
Doesn't say that in the charter, Mayor.
Well, councillor Olson, I, I can provide you the information, uh, later. But if at a meeting, any meeting, any committee meeting, that there is the chair not there, then the committee is required to elect.
Yes.
An alternate chair.
If they haven't got one for one.
Situation.
Is a one point of one year.
Councillor Olson, I'm speaking. In this situation, there is no permanent chair elected. There has been no one, uh, willing to take on that position as the permanent chair. So therefore the chair position is vacant at every meeting and then is required to elect a chair on an interim basis.
Mayor, Mayor Savell, a question of clarification. Why do not committee, uh, when, when people are asked to come to as a representative of the community to a briefing session, why do they not have to abide by council's code of conduct? And why would you invite them ever back again if they do cause trouble?
So I think the director already outlined the, the, that response earlier.
So you might invite them back again if you want, if you feel it's fit. Someone can invite someone back.
No further debates. I'll put the item, all those in favor. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell. Those against, uh, councillor Olson. Uh, councillor reports, um, I'm advised that it is just. Yep, um, so two councillor reports, um, councillor, uh, Jackson has provided a, a written report in, in regards to the, uh, Australian Local Government Association Conference. Uh, and I think councillor Jurd was seeking the call just in regards to roads conference.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, so going down to Sydney was a bit of an eye opener. I forgot how much traffic was down Sydney and, um, how fun it is to try and find the car park situation. They might need our roads, uh, which is quite interesting because, uh, it was for the local, uh, roads con- congress. So it was quite nice to actually meet some of the ministers that we have and, um, seeing liberal that are no longer in charge of roads and how they were talking with Labour, who now have took over. So, um, and I found it quite interesting to find out, uh, about, uh, our roads, regional roads minister talking about, uh, how she used to be in the tourism, tourism industry. So she knows the road network quite well. So it was a very good, um, exercise. I would go to the next one. Thank you.
Yeah.